The January meeting of the Suffolk City Planning Commission will now come to order. I ask Commissioner Edwards if he will bring the invocation.
Let us pray. Father God in heaven, Lord, we come to you thanking you for all your many blessings. God, we thank you how you watched over us and carried us through a rough year. And God, we thank you that today we can assemble together in your world with you formed by the power of your words. And God, we just ask today that our hearts and our minds will be focused on the task at hand. God, I ask that you will give each of us wisdom and understanding and knowledge to make the right decisions. God, thank you for all those under the sound of my voice, those who have visions that they would like to fulfill, and those decision makers who help make those decisions each day. God, thank you for all at the head of our departments. And Lord, I thank you for them giving up their gifts and their talents to better the lives of so many people. And God, I ask that you will touch them and protect them and keep them in this time. And Lord, we are all mindful of all we have seen in the world these past couple of weeks. And God, we thank you that we have comfort in the fact that all you have to do is speak the word and peace will be made still. God, touch our hearts, wrap us in your love, and let us walk closer into your light and into your image. We ask all these things in your mighty and righteous name. Amen.
Mr. Heinley, if you'll call the roll, please.
Commissioner Benton.
Present.
Commissioner Creekmore.
Here.
Commissioner Eberwine.
Present.
Commissioner Edwards.
Here.
Commissioner Hicks.
Here.
Commissioner Rector.
Here.
Commissioner Singleton.
Here.
Commissioner Staler.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, all members of the present, you do have a quorum.
Thank you for that. Are there any corrections to the minutes of the December meeting? If not, those minutes will stand approved as presented. Our first matter of business this afternoon is a family transfer plat. That is not a public hearing. It is family transfer subdivision plat request, FTR 2020-00006. Mr. Heinley, if you'll present the caption, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, this request was submitted by Frank Rawls, applicant on behalf of Ernest W. Ellis, property owner, requesting a family transfer subdivision pursuant to Section 31 514 of the Unified Development Ordinance. The affected property is identified as zoning map 66, parcel 37, Wayleyville, Voddingborough, Zone A Agricultural Zoning District. The city's 2035 comprehensive plan identifies this property as being located with the rural agricultural district. When you act upon this request, you act upon a resolution approving a family transfer subdivision on property located on White Marsh Road, zoning map 66, parcel 37, FTR 2020-0006. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. At this time, I recognize Ms. Swine, staff planner.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. As stated, this is a family transfer request submitted by Frank Rawls on behalf of Ernest W. Ellis. Mr. Ellis is requesting to create one new parcel for his son, E. Michael Ellis. My apologies, as there was a typo in the staff report under case history, so I wanted to make that aware that his son is E. Michael Ellis. The subject property is located in the rural agricultural use district per the 2035 comprehensive The surrounding area is zoned A agricultural and is comprised of fields, forested land, and single-family dwellings. Pursuant to Section 31 514B2 of the Unified Development Ordinance, the property owner requesting the family transfer subdivision shall have held fee simple title to the subject property for a minimum of three years prior to the filing of an application. Mr. Ellis has owned the property since 2010, which fulfills this requirement. E. Michael Ellis, Mr. Ellis's son, has not previously received a family transfer parcel; therefore, he is eligible for this family transfer subdivision. Mr. Ellis owns the subject parcel depicted above, which is located at 4536 White Marsh Road. This parcel consists of 56.102 acres, and Mr. Ellis is proposing to transfer 1.063 acres to his son, leaving 55.039 acres as the residual parcel. The lot dimensions and building setback lines for the proposed new lot are consistent with the underlying agricultural zoning district. The proposed new parcel has a 50-foot ingress/egress easement, providing access to the proposed parcel from White Marsh Road. There is adequate area on the new proposed lot for separate dwelling and drain field. A deed of gift has been prepared in conjunction with this plat, and it contains the required covenant that prohibits transfer of the property within 10 years of its receipt, except in conformity with Sections 31 514B3 of the Unified Development Ordinance. Lastly, all parties have completed a sworn affidavit acknowledging that the purpose of this family transfer is to provide separate places of residence for the grantee and keep the family estate within the immediate family. In summary, this request meets the criteria for a family transfer subdivision. Therefore, staff recommends approval of FTR 2020-00006. Thank you.
Ms. Swine. Again, this is a family transfer subdivision. At this time, I turn to the commissioners for any questions, comments, or motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and make a motion that FTR 2020-00006 be approved as presented.
Motion for approval from Commissioner Rector. And a second from Commissioner Singleton. All right, motion and second. Discussion of the motion. Let's try this with a voice vote. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no. Congratulations to the applicant.
Thank you.
All right. The next two items on our agenda this afternoon are public hearings. Public hearings are 30 minutes in length, 10 minutes for proponents, 15 minutes for comments by opponents, 5 minutes for rebuttal. By the proponent, the first public hearing is conditional use permit request, CUP 2020-021, Heavenly Angel Healthcare Center. And before I turn to Mr. Heinley, Officer Jackson, is everyone in here who wishes to be a participant of this public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Mr. Heinley.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, this request was submitted by Joanne Calvi, Heavenly Angel Healthcare Services LLC applicant on behalf of Curtis Mako, property owner in accordance with Sections 31 306 and 31 406 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant a conditional use permit to establish an adult daycare center on property located at 430 North Main Street, zoning map 34G 11 parentheses A parcel 137. The affected area is further identified as being located in Suffolk-Voddingborough, Zone CBD Central Business District, zoning district. The 2035 comprehensive plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area Mixed Use Core Use District. When you act upon this request, you will be acting upon a resolution to present a report and recommendation to city council relating to conditional use permit request, CUP 2020-021. Mr. Chairman.
At this time, I recognize Ms. Swine, staff planner.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. As stated, this is a conditional use permit to establish an adult daycare located at 430 North Main Street. The property is located within the Mixed Use Core Use District and Central Growth Area. This property is zoned CBD Central Business District. The subject property is surrounded by office buildings and a cemetery also zoned CBD. Applicant is proposing to utilize two client rooms, two bathrooms, with one designated for staff only, and the other will be ADA accessible for client use, a kitchen for food preparation, and office space. The upper level of the building will be for storage use for employees only. The applicant is proposing to have four clients at a time and staff four employees. The staff is comprised of a registered nurse, a licensed practical nurse, a personal care assistant, and an office administrator. The proposed hours of operation are from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. An ADA accessible ramp to enter and exit the daycare is located to the rear of the building. Lastly, parking requirements for an adult daycare is one space per 375 square feet to 1.5 spaces per 375 square feet. The applicant is required to have five spaces. The driveway and parking lot towards the rear of the building can contain up to 10 vehicles; therefore, there is adequate parking for the proposed use. Staff has closely reviewed the request to determine its compatibility with the criteria outlined in Section 31-306 of the Unified Development Ordinance as it pertains to requested conditional use permits. After review, staff finds that the proposed use meets the criteria outlined in the Unified Development Ordinance and that the use would not negatively impact the surrounding area. Accordingly, staff recommends approval of CUP 2020-00021 with the conditions as noted in the attached resolution and ordinance. I am happy to answer any questions you may have following the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swine. At this time, we will now open the public hearing. Who would like to speak on behalf of this application?
Good afternoon. My name is Marveta Lewis. I'm speaking on behalf of Ms. Joanne Klein for the adult daycare proposal that was just submitted. Forgive me my glasses. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Again, give us your name and address.
My name, Marveta Lewis. My personal address of the business, sir. The address is 430 North Main Street, Suffolk, Virginia.
Continue.
I'm sorry. The proposal for the adult daycare is to provide recreation for the facilities for adults needing that socialization throughout the day. Right now, especially during the COVID period, Ms. Joanne Klein thought it was necessary for adults to have that space to go COVID-friendly in an effort to have the sociability for the adults within our community. The proposal is requesting, I'm sorry, for our adult daycare, we'll provide arts and crafts, exercise, bingo games throughout the day, light meals. I think that was presented in the proposal in an effort to keep our elderly socialized throughout the community.
This is your moment to tell us what you want us to hear.
So the property of 430 North Main Street, Suffolk, Virginia, would be utilized for adult daycare service to provide a coordinated program for professional compassionate services for the adults in the communities. Based on a group setting, Heavenly Angels Healthcare is an non-residential facility that is designed to support the health and nutritional and social daily living of the adults in a professional staff group and setting. As stated before, the center will provide meals, meaningful activities, and general supervision. Our proposed staff for the daycare will be an RN, a registered nurse, a licensed practical nurse, and a personal care assistant, along with an office administrator. Heavenly Angels Healthcare will also provide respite care on a basis for those unforeseen actions throughout duty day, things come up. If there are any additional questions, sir?
We'll ask any questions we have following the public hearing.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on behalf of this application? If not, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? If not, Ms. Lewis, would you like to make any additional comments on behalf of your application?
None at this time, sir.
Thank you. We will now close the public hearing. I turn to the commissioners for questions, comments, or motion.
Chairman, let me offer a motion to approve CUP 2020-021 with the five conditions.
Motion for approval from Commissioner Hicks.
Second motion.
Second from Commissioner Edwards. Motion in second for approval. Discussion of the motion. Motion in second is for approval. Mr. Heinley, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Benton.
Yes.
Commissioner Creekmore.
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwine.
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards.
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks.
Yes.
Commissioner Rector.
Yes.
Commissioner Singleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Staler.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, is 80 recommendation in favor?
Congratulations, and this will go to city council on February 17 with a recommendation for approval. Congratulations.
All right, thank you all. Have a blessed day.
Our next and last public hearing this afternoon is conditional use permit request, CUP 2020-025, a day with Diva Child Daycare. Mr. Heinley, if you'll present the caption, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, this request was submitted by Danan and Diva Stith applicants and property owners in accordance with Sections 31 306 and 31 406 of the Unified Development Ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a daycare, family daycare home, five to 12 children, on property located at 409 Keaton Way, zoning map 25G parcel 4*197. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Chukituck-Voddingborough, Zone PD Plan Development and Zoning District. The 2035 comprehensive plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area Suburban Use District. When you act upon this request, you act upon a resolution to present a report and recommendation to city council relating to conditional use permit request, CUP 2020-025. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Officer Jackson, is anyone outside that would like to participate in this?
[inaudible]
All right. Thank you. All right. At this time, I recognize staff planner, Ms. Collyer.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Planning Commissioners. As stated, this CUP is to establish a family day home on property located at 409 Keaton Way. The property up for discussion is located within the Suburban Use District in the Northern Growth Area and is a part of the Chukituck-Voddingborough. The property is zoned PD Plan Development and is located in Section 4 of the Berkshire Meadows subdivision. Since the PD zoning district does not specifically outline permitted uses such as family day homes, we refer to the zoning district that is most similar. The property is compatible in lot size, use, and density with the RC and RM zoning districts, both which require a conditional use permit for a family day home of five to 12 children. The applicant proposes to utilize the existing house as a family day home to provide care for up to 12 children. The two-story, single-family home is approximately 1,542 square feet with three bedrooms and three bathrooms. The home is not currently operating as a family day home. The applicant is proposing to utilize the first floor only, and the children will have access to the living room, dining room, sunroom, and kitchen. The children will also have access to one bathroom. The family day home is not currently licensed to the Virginia Department of Social Services. The family day home will need to be licensed in order to care for five to 12 children. Section 31-701 of the Unified Development Ordinance provides supplemental standards for a family day home with five to 12 children. Family day homes are required to have 50 square feet of space if furniture and equipment are included. The daycare will utilize approximately 773 square feet of the home's 1,542 square feet, which is adequate space for the requested maximum of 12 children. The age range of the children that will be cared for is newborn to 12 years old, and the applicant would have to comply with the child-to-staff ratio as set forth by the Virginia Department of Social Services. The proposed hours of operation will be from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The proposed hours of operation are consistent with those outlined in the supplemental standards for a family day home. Home has a six-foot wooden privacy fence bordering the approximately 4,705 square feet backyard, which meets the required minimum of 1,000 square feet outdoor play area for a family day home. The privacy fence that borders the outdoor play area acts as a barrier and would help reduce any noise that may be generated from the proposed use. Additionally, the use of the outdoor play area shall be limited to the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. in accordance with the supplemental standards. The proposed use would have little to no impact on the surrounding neighbors. There is an existing pool located within the outdoor play area that will not be utilized as a part of the proposed use. The above-ground pool is accessed using a removable ladder, which will be removed during the daycare operating hours. The applicant has also purchased fencing, as shown in the bottom right-hand of this slide, that will be attached around the top of the pool for additional safety measures. Lastly, in addition to the two parking spaces required for the residential use, the proposed use will need one parking space for the family day home plus one parking space for any future employee. The required minimum parking for this site is four spaces. The property has a two-car driveway, and there is availability for on-street parking. Therefore, there is adequate parking for the residential use and the proposed use. Staff finds that the proposed use meets the criteria for conditional use permits as set forth in Section 31-306 of the Unified Development Ordinance and that the use would not negatively impact the surrounding area. Accordingly, staff recommends approval of CUP 2020-025 with the conditions as noted in the attached resolution and ordinance. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have following the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Collyer. At this time, we will open the public hearing. Who would like to speak on behalf of this application?
My name is Diva Stith, and as Ms. Connor said, I'm trying to open up an in-home daycare for children. So I really appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity to be here, and Ms. Connor, thanks for representing me as well. I really wasn't prepared to say anything, so that's why I'm kind of stuck right now. So please bear with me. I decided to open up an in-home daycare when I got out of the military, as I knew that it was something that I wanted to do, not just for myself, but for other parents as well. And I just feel like I could give children and their parents, I guess, a good state of mind, or a good peace of mind, should I say, when their children are home with me. I can show them different things, whether it's planning or teaching ABCs. I have three children of my own as well, so I teach them on a daily. But unfortunately, due to me having three children of my own, I had to get a permit from the state as well to move forward. So this is why I had to go through the application to, I guess, succeed of what I'm trying to do here. So once again, thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Stith. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on behalf of this application? If not, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? If not, Ms. Stith, would you like to make any additional comments?
No, sir.
If not, we will now close the public hearing. I turn to the commissioners for questions, comments, or motion.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a couple of questions. Maybe first, Ms. Collyer? I rode by the property yesterday just to check on it, and at the time, the parking space in front of the garage was, there were two vehicles there, and there were vehicles on the street, so there was absolutely no parking available at the time I went by. So I'm a little concerned about the parking. If the home gets up to the 12 children, do you know what the requirement for staffing would be?
I would have to look to see what the staff ratio would be. I don't have it presently at this time.
Okay, because I'd be a little concerned if they required two or three staff members, it would pretty much eat up all the parking space, so I do have concern about that. The swimming pool, it mentions that that will be, the access, the ladder going to the pool would be removed, and there would be some kind of fencing around the top of the pool. Do you have any idea what that would be, or maybe that's something that Ms. Stith could tell us about?
The fencing, if you look in the bottom right-hand corner, there is an attached, she sent me a copy of the invoice showing the fencing that was purchased. Whether or not it has been installed presently, I am not aware of. That would be something to refer to Ms. Stith. And yes, the ladder is accessible by a removable ladder. If you look in the top left-hand corner, you can see the ladder there, and the applicant has stated that that ladder will be removed during daycare hours.
All right, thank you very much.
Just a minute, Ms. Collyer. Let me see if any other commissioner has a question to you while you're at the podium.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, to sort of, I guess, piggyback with Commissioner Staler, the pool, does the licensing people, are they going to have anything to say about that or the insurance people? I mean, that just looks like a glaringly huge liability.
So with regards, they do have building code requirements that they have to meet, and then they will have the licensing agents that will come in and do their inspections. So that would be addressed through them. As far as what exactly they require with regards to the pool, I am not aware of.
The other commissioner questioned Ms. Collyer. Thank you.
One thing I would add, Mr. Chairman, I do know that there is a homeowners association in that neighborhood, and I know that has nothing to do with our approval, but I would suggest that this do check with the homeowners association to make sure that it's a liable practice. So just a suggestion to check with them. Maybe you've already done so. That's all.
Let me use this as a moment of opportunity for your comment. Isn't it correct, and I turn to Mr. Heinley, that homeowners association cannot override city authority?
No, no. I'm going to yield the hella lie on that one, since that's a legal question.
Chairman, then, the proper way to say that is that the homeowners association, when a person agrees to live in that association, makes various covenants to which they will or will not do. The city has nothing to do with it, but it does not stop the homeowners association from enforcing those covenants in which the person has agreed to.
Thank you for that clarification.
That's exactly why I brought it up, because it may save some potential problem down the way.
Thank you, Ms. Collyer. We have had the public hearing. We are back to the commissioners now for questions, comments, or motion.
Chairman, approval of CUP 2020-025.
Is that a motion? A motion for approval? Ms. Hicks?
A motion for approval from Commissioner Hicks. Do I hear a second?
Second.
From Commissioner Singleton. Motion in second for approval. Discussion of the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm assuming that's with the conditions listed?
The conditions listed, yes.
And she clarified with the conditions, and your second is with the conditions. All right, I think we're good to go there. Again, motion in second for approval. Discussion of the motion. Mr. Heinley, call for the vote.
Commissioner Benton.
Yes.
Commissioner Creekmore.
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwine.
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards.
No.
Commissioner Hicks.
Yes.
Commissioner Rector.
Oh.
Commissioner Singleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Staler.
Oh.
Mr. Chairman, it goes forward with a 5 to 3 recommendation in favor.
Thank you. And Ms. Stith, this will go to city council on February 17 with a recommendation for approval. That concludes our public hearings this afternoon. Our next item on the agenda is old business, which is a staff report presentation on the proposed capital improvement plan for the fiscal year 2022 to the year 2031. And at this time- And at this time, I would like to give credit to Commissioners Rector and Staylor for having represented the Planning Commission as participants in the preparation of the capital improvement plan. At this time, I recognize Ms. Hanson.
Afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. Today, I am here to present a much, much shorter version of the capital improvements plan that I was at your meeting in December to present. So we'll go through, the slides should look very familiar to you. They are very much the same as the first few summary slides that you saw in December. We won't get into the detail of all of the particular projects, and then I will, myself and the other department heads with projects in the CIP, are here to answer any questions that you might have at the conclusion of my presentation. So I'll get right started, get right to it. The chart that you see on the screen there is the total of all of the funds of all of the various projects, broken down by fund, of the projects proposed in the fiscal year 2022 through 2031.
Excuse me, let me interrupt and ask, is there a page number you can give us in our manuals here that we can follow that?
The page that you're going to look for on that particular one is going to be numbered page one, and you'll see that that looks very much like the top of page one. The next several slides will be focused on page one in your books.
Because if I remember correctly, all of your slides are correlated to certain pages in-
They are, but we're not going to get into the details of the specific projects in this particular summary. So on page one, and here on the slide, you can see that we're showing you the first five years of the capital improvements plan as it is proposed. I'll point out a couple of numbers to you there. The total of year one, which is fiscal year '22, is $60,519,085. That is for all funds for all projects. The total for the whole first five years is over in the far right-hand column that is highlighted yellow, and for all funds and all projects, it is a total of $353,776,732. The schedule there at the bottom shows our debt capacity, that we anticipate that we can borrow every year, and that is a static $30 million a year. The red number shows our additional capacity, when you take into account what we're planning on issuing versus that $30 million number. And if there were a number in parentheses, then that would mean we're planning on issuing more debt than that $30 million, but you can see there across the first five years, there are no numbers in parentheses. So I'll go to the next slide, and the next slide is going to be from the bottom of page one in your book, and this shows a little bit more breakdown as to the funding sources of what those projects are. So you can see that for the Public Utilities Fund in year one, we're planning on $15.1 million with the projects. Approximately 9.3 of that is going to be funded with VRA revenue bonds, or revenue bonds of some sort, and the remaining $5.8 million is to be cash funded out of the Public Utilities Fund. And you can see that that pattern follows through for the first five years of the plan. The fleet fund, we have a project out in year four of the plan to start on a replacement fleet facility, and that is anticipated to be issued with, built with general obligation bonds. The next one there is the Stormwater Fund, and you can see that we have a variety of funding sources for the Stormwater projects, including miscellaneous revenue, state transportation funds, as well as a transfer of cash from the Stormwater Fund, and the projects in year one in the Stormwater Fund of approximately $950,300, for a total of $22.5 million for the first five years. This next slide shows the Transit Fund. Also, state, federal grant funds and transfers from the Transit Fund to build the projects included in there. The Information Technology Fund, this is where we are tracking all the major projects of the city as it relates to our information technology, and all of our computers and systems that need to be upgraded regularly. We have a project, the first year is approximately $500,000, split equally between cash transfers from the General Fund, as well as general obligation bonds, and that pattern follows through the first five years. The last category there is general government funds. This is where you're going to find all of the projects related to transportation, parks and rec, public safety, public education, our buildings and facilities that the city owns and operates, as well as our village and neighborhoods. And so all of those projects are rolled into here, but the funding sources that we anticipate are a mixture of state transportation funds, state and federal grant funds, transfers from the General Fund, and the transfers from the General Fund are what we use to meet our PEGO policy, or our cash-funded capital policy. Transfers from the Road Maintenance Fund, as well as general obligation bonds. This gets us to the same totals we saw earlier, of approximately $60.5 million with the projects in year one, approximately $353.8 million for the first five years for all funds. And the last number I want to draw your attention to on this particular schedule is the total of the General Government Fund projects for the first five years is $247,494,422. This number is what we're going to talk in detail about on the next couple of slides, so approximately $247.5 million. This next slide shows a pie chart showing the breakdown of that $247.5 million with the projects that I just mentioned, broken down by where they are going, the functional categories of where those projects are. So 47% of those projects are transportation-related, 23% of them are public education-related, public buildings and facilities at 12%, public safety at 9%, village and neighborhoods at 5%, and parks and recreation at 4%. The next slide shows a pie chart representation of where the funding sources are for that same $247.5 million, and you can see that over half of it is funded by general obligation bonds. State, federal, and other sourced revenue is approximately 32%, and 11% comes from cash transfers from the General Fund. This next pie chart that I'm going to show you is going to be very similar to the one that I just showed you about the functional categories of the expenses, but before I switch over to it, I want you to take note of that piece of this pie, the blue chart, that's 32% funded by other sources. So we're going to remove that piece of the pie, for lack of a better word, and we're going to show you on this pie chart how the functional categories of expenditures breaks down a little bit differently when we remove the grant dollars that we use to purchase or to build a lot of our capital programs. So if you'll remember, before, transportation was approximately 47% of the pie. If we take out the grant dollars that we use to fund our transportation projects, it now becomes 34%. So this is 34% of the local dollars put towards, this is bonds and cash, put towards our projects, and it goes to, I'm sorry, transportation now goes to 24%. I saw the bigger piece, and my brain did some association there without reading. My apologies. Transportation drops from 47% to 24%. Public education increases from approximately, I think it was about 23% to 34%. The rest remain pretty close to the same at 16% for public buildings, public safety at 13%, village and neighborhoods at 7%, and parks and rec at 5%. With that, what are the next steps? And so the next steps are that we will take any feedback that you have for us today. We ask for your adoption of the recommended CIP to move forward to City Council. We are scheduled to present this to the full City Council at tomorrow's work session on January 20. And then on February 7, we will ask that City Council schedule a public hearing to hear public comment and receive City Council edits and hopeful adoption of the CIP at the February 17 meeting. With that, if you have any questions for myself, or any of the other department heads that have projects in the plan, we are happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson. And commissioners, as you have heard her say, there is the expectation that we will respond to this today so that it can be sent to City Council. But in the meantime, as she stands at the podium, are there any questions or comments from the commissioners to Ms. Hanson?
Mr. Chairman, I do have some questions, and I apologize to everybody. I did get to see this right when it was hot off the press with Commissioner Rector. I would have a recommendation, and I don't know how we would go with this, but prior to that meeting, I did ask if a copy of it could be presented to us prior to that meeting, so we'd have the time to review it in some detail, so that we would be able to do that. We were not able to get that, and then when we did have that meeting, the copy we had could not be released, so we couldn't even take it back with us to review. So I think that process needs to be looked at a little bit, just as a suggestion, in that even though I'm an accountant, when you throw this many pages at us and we sit down with it the first time, it's hard to come up with any reasonable questions. That being said, I apologize again for not being here last month. Every year, I mention something about my concern for the amount of the borrowing. It's my understanding we do pay back a considerable amount of the principal each year. I see that in this year's CIP, there is a substantial amount going to, for public utilities. And in that, there's also some $9.3 million being borrowed in revenue bonds, as you all know, revenue bonds are paid from the sources. I'm a little concerned that that might lead us to having to have an increase in water fees, water and sewer fees, which are, and maybe that's not the case, but I do have concern for that. Also, for the borrowing, when they tell you you can borrow a certain amount of money, that doesn't mean you have to borrow it, even though there are many, many good projects in this. I've got one major issue. You can see I've done a little homework on this. Back in the back of the CIP, this is on page 71, there's $250,000 that's in the budget for internet access expansion. Do we, how much do we receive, does the city receive on an annual basis generally from charter cable? I know we get fees for that. I mentioned, I probably asked you that when I talked to you the other day.
I checked with the Commissioner of Revenue on this one, and we do receive a utility license tax from charter. However, that revenue comes through the business license tax section of our collections, and as such, it's confidential information how much they submit to us, and I can't, I don't have the numbers on that. The Commissioner of the Revenue is responsible for those numbers, and with the confidential nature of it, I can't speak to those numbers.
Okay. I also heard from somebody, and I don't, I can't disclose the source because I don't remember what it was, but that we also receive maybe some reimbursement from the state up to $250,000 a year. Is that not correct or correct?
I would need a little bit more specific information on reimbursement for what and from, we receive a lot of revenue sources from the state, but without additional information about the specifics of exactly what you're talking about, I'm not sure I can answer the question.
Okay, all right, thank you. It's my understanding that in some of the outlying areas, particularly in Holy Neck, Waylville, and some of the other areas, that internet access is non-existent, primarily because of the fact that cables do not run there. And I think this first 250 was going to be designated to go to extend the service in the Waylville borough. Is that correct?
Not sure that that has been identified as to specifically what that 250 is going to be for.
Okay. I've also heard, so I've been, you know, when you're home and you got a lot of time, you listen to a lot of things, you talk to a lot of people, that some of the parents of the children that do not have access to internet through charter cable are having to actually go to the school's park, in the school's parking lot, for the children to do their homework and to do their school learning, which is just terrible, I think. I think that's awful in a city the size of ours to have that situation. It makes you wonder why, and since I am representing the Holy Neck Borough, I guess we all represent all burrows, that some of the folks that we represent, at this point in time in society, do not have that available to them, and I kind of wonder if the city has dropped the ball by not providing this service to its citizens, all citizens, that's possible. I would like to see that if we do pass this CIP today, that maybe some consideration or recommendation come from the Planning Commission, that we look at this $2.5 million that's spread out over five years for the, a million 250, I believe it is, for the expansion of the internet. That's a drop in the bucket compared to the amount of money that the city spends every year, and it looks to me that we ought to make this a priority for all of the citizens in the city of Suffolk to have access to the internet, if possible. And if it costs $1,250,000, then I think that probably, the way the numbers work, that those numbers could be found somewhere in a budget of this size, or capital improvement plan of this size. So I will be in favor of the CIP, but I would sure like to send a recommendation to Council to go along with it, that they look very seriously at speeding up the internet access primarily because I think with this COVID and the shutdowns of the schools, that it's just unbelievable to me that we haven't moved faster on that issue. So that's all I have to say. Thank you, Tila.
Again, we've heard staff's report from Ms. Hanson on the proposed capital improvement plan that we are to respond to today and forward to City Council. Are there any other commissioners who have questions or comments to Ms. Hanson while she's at the podium? Thank you, Ms. Hanson. All right, commissioners, you have heard staff's report. You've heard comments, more specifically, from Commissioner Staylor. We are at the point now that we need questions, comments, or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the CIP as presented with asterisks and perhaps a footnote, if it's possible, if it's, you know, can be more than a verbal recommendation, because I agree with Commissioner Staylor, and I made the same comment when it was presented, and I believe several others of us did as well, with what happened this year of the need to accelerate and get going, providing the availability of internet access to the rural areas. It's going to be critical.
You're making a motion with approval, but you're also expressing a desire to attach an addendum, if I should say that, or a recommendation from commission attached to that. Am I understanding you correct?
Yes, and I'll play the role of executive, and I'll leave the details to the people that can, that know how to do that kind of stuff. But yeah, I mean, I would like City Council to know that as a body, we would encourage them to devote more of the resources to providing internet access to the rural areas, particularly so that these children, as Mr. Staylor says, do not have to go to the school parking lot and sit in their cars to do their work.
We've been made aware of how challenging that is to the public. Now, I realize we've got a motion, but before I ask for a second, I'm going to go back to what Commissioner Rector said, and I turn to Mr. Hanley, I turn to Ms. Holland, our staff, to give us a little bit of guidance there with the motion. Now, it's understood, this is a motion that he's proposing to come forward, but before I ask for a second, and before I call for a vote on that, there needs to be some clarification as to what Mr. Rector is saying, as to how we, as a commissioner, or as commissioners, how he can do that, because it could be some other commissioner, as we go through this dialogue, may have some other thoughts of an addendum to the motion.
Mr. Chairman, it would be appropriate to make a motion that included a recommendation as Commissioner Stil has spoken to, as well as Commissioner Rector. There are some plans that have been provided in previous meetings, because this concern about internet is not solely the Planning Commission's concern, it's something that the city has been working on diligently since before COVID. We have issues with now charter doing business at Spectrum in regards to our agreement with them and what they are willing to offer based on density. So the problem- them and what they are willing to offer based on density. So the problem that we somewhat have is, as Commissioner Staylor mentioned, it's a big city, but it's a big city that's rural, and the density requirements of the existing contract with charter doing business as spectrum, um, speaks to a certain amount of, um, houses in a small, um, space between them. Um, that is being addressed. Um, there was a grant that the city applied for that would help, and that has been applied for, and I think we received it. I'm seeing a shaking head, right? Um, well, we applied for the grant that was mentioned at the city, so the state understands this situation, because it's not solely with Suffolk, that the issues of internet is a problem. I'm not sure if there's someone with staff that wants to elaborate, but as it relates to the motion, it would be proper for a recommendation to be given as a part of the motion for council's consideration at the time of their passage. Um, you know that this is a recommending body, so the appropriate time to make that is in the motion, and when it is heard on tomorrow with the council meeting, um, Mr., I guess it would be Teal, and who would provide the information of the planning commission approving with the following recommendation, and those recommendations will be considered by the council prior to their approval.
Thank you for that part of that clarification, but let me come back and, if I can, to, to help Commissioner Rekta to properly express his motion. So as we respond to it with or without a second, and then possibly with or without the, the response from the commissioners, uh, it, it seems to be that very clear what he's saying, and we hear what you're saying, that staff is, um, focused on expanding, uh, this into the rural areas as much as possible. So what I'm trying to do, he has made a rec, he has made a motion that we approve the budget.
Right.
With, am I using the right word, uh, consideration or an addendum, uh, that city council?
I thought it was going to be a recommendation, as, um, Commissioner Staylor put it, I think he, when I put the two together, I thought he was asking that more money be put toward that for the first year, but I'm not certain, I don't want to put words in Commissioner Staylor's mouth.
Basically, what I was saying was that that million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars be advanced rather than doing two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year for the next five years, that we go ahead and, and increase the CIP to show that, uh, that million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, be looked at as being a, a year twenty-two, um, uh, issue, and that the, uh, internet be expanded as soon as possible to these outlined areas. Is that, that what we said?
[laughing]
Um, but i, if it's possible, Ms. Hanson, can you return to the podium, please? First off, I apologize for throwing a monkey wrench into the works, um, but I, I think you know from our subcommittee meetings that, you know, this is an issue that's near and dear to me, um, so I am willing to fight for it. My only concern with what Mr. Staylor has recommended is if, if we crowd it all into the first year, it, is it going to force the city to be making perhaps not wise decisions just simply to, to spend the money, or can that money be allocated in that year, and then if it is not all spent, drop down to subsequent years, you know, so that the money is spent wisely?
There are two issues at play here. One is that there is a capacity issue in year one. As you saw, we are at, we are at our maximum bond capacity. This is a cash-funded project, but we are also at our maximum cash, cash capacity in year one. So there is an issue there of finding funding for it. Um, there are a lot of, a lot of priorities of the city, excuse me, a lot of things that need to be funded, and certainly a lot of important things that need to be funded. Um, so that is one issue that we will face with bringing it all forward into year one, but it is certainly something I can mention to the ci, you know, I can, I can put in my presentation to city council tomorrow that, that this body is recommending that. The second issue is as far as whether it all has to be spent in year one. Capital projects are multi-year projects. Um, certainly when we build roads and buildings, it, it, it takes more than twelve months to build them. So any funding that isn't, any funding that is designated in year one and approved as part of the capital budget doesn't necessarily have to be spent within twelve months of that budget being enacted. Is that what, is, does that answer your question?
It, it, it does, and, and thank you very much for that. And, and having heard that, um, I'm in concurrence with Mr. Staylor's recommendation, and we just, just see where it goes. And I think it'll send a message to council, and I think it'll let the citizens, particularly in the rural area of the city, know that, uh, we're concerned about it, and we're trying to do everything we can to mitigate, mitigate the issue if, if kids are going to have to continue to stay at home.
Don't, don't leave the podium just yet, Ms. Hanson, because if I understand what you said, Ms. Hanson, if we start putting a numerical figure to the funding of it, then somewhere in the budget, something is going to have to be removed elsewhere to make the budget bounce. Is that correct?
Um, within, within the overall operating capital budget of the city, yes.
That, that's what I'm saying, that if we start putting a numerical figure, dollar figure to it, uh, uh, for the communications, that then we'd have to diminish something somewhere else in the budget.
Or a funding source will have to be identified, yes.
Okay. You confirmed what I'm trying to say.
Yes.
Now, let me turn back to Commissioner Rekta. With what has been said, what would be your motion at this point? And I'm trying to, I'm trying to come to a point that the motion is understood, and that it, it-
Well, I, I, I think without rewriting what is already there, um, my motion would be for approval with the recommendation, as Mr. Staylor stated it, that the money allocated in years one through five for internet, uh, expanding internet access be compressed as much as possible into, uh, into year one. And then let Ms. Hanson and city council, you know, for lack of a better phrase, uh, work out the, work out the details. But, you know, I, I sort of agree a little bit with Mr. Staylor, and I understand the, you know, the brick wall that you're up against in terms of finding funding sources and whatnot, but, you know, out of three hundred and fifty-some million dollars to scoot one million up, you know, it, it was at point oh-three percent, Mr. Staylor, you know, it's, it's not, it, it's not a huge, huge figure, but I, I think it's a very symbolic figure.
Uh, Mr.-
Did I answer your question, or did I just pontificate?
I, I think you went beyond, beyond it, because what I'm trying to do, what I'm trying to do is, is chairperson at this moment, we need a motion, but we need a motion that's clearly understood, and, and I think you attached more verbiage to it as you explained it. And, and what I'm looking for is-
If, if I can, I think what I said right in the beginning is, is I would recommend approval as presented with a recommendation that the one point two-five million allocated to the internet access in years one through five be compressed into year one as much as possible.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
All right. Let me kind of cast my eyes around here to be sure that that is a doable motion for us to vote on. Uh, I, I turn first to our legal advisor. Is that a realistic motion?
It's a realistic, because you all are making a recommendation. The city council is making a decision of what our CIP budget will include. So things are changed from here to council, they'll get the presentation on Wednesday, things might change in those numbers by the time they approve it in February. So all you all are doing is giving a recommendation for consideration by council.
But my question is, is his motion an acceptable motion for me to invite a second and then to act on it?
Yes.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Ms. Hanson.
Yes.
All right. Do we understand the motion before us now? I am now asking for a second to Commissioner Rekta's motion.
It would only be appropriate for me to second that motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second from Commissioner Rekta and a Commissioner Staylor, uh, on forwarding the proposed budget to city council. Discussion of the motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Ed.
I have a opening question. Um, the CIP that we saw today is the recommendation from the subcommittee.
They participated.
Yeah, yeah.
The subcommittee, uh, Commissioner Staylor and Commissioner Rekta participated with city staff and others in drawing up this proposed budget.
Right. Right. So the city manager made a budget, a CIP budget, the subcommittee received it, and they talked about it. Subcommittee voted on the, um, on the budget as presented, and was brought to us for our recommendation. So this is basically the subcommittee's budget, right?
They participated.
No, that's-
It's not that, all of them are proposed till it gets to its final point. So as the, um, commissioner said that, excuse me, the chairman said is, it was not just the subcommittee on it, it was various staff members on it. And then that proposed budget is brought to the planning commission. So I think the confusion is saying that it's the subcommittee's, um, motion, I mean, budget, it's not the subcommittee, it's the, a group of people who were selected to work on a proposed CIP, that body sends it to this body, and then this body makes a recommendation on it, and then it goes to council for the final approval.
Okay. So, so my question, okay. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. So if this, my question is, could the subcommittee make recommendations in the subcommittee?
This is a process of putting the budget together to where it goes to city council, and then there will yet be public hearings.
Right.
This is a process in that-
So my question is, on the subcommittee level, could they, were they allowed to make any kind of modifications on the subcommittee level?
They were allowed to contribute and participate in the entire committee for the city of Suffolk.
Mr. Chairman, and, and Mr. Edwards, if this will help you a little bit, one of the recommendations that came out of our initial meeting as a group, the money that they had allocated for internet access was not even into next year, it was the year after that. So based on our comments, it got pushed into, they, they accelerated that by a year. Um, but this is the first time that this CIP, I think, has actually been, quote, "voted on," uh, by a body. Everything else up until this point has simply been recommendations and discussions.
I should understand. So, so the, so in the subcommittee, y'all discussed, it was at zero for year one?
For the first year, yes, sir.
And so the city was able to find two hundred and fifty thousand for this year and kind of spread it out. Is, am I understanding correctly?
They just, I, I believe this is- Th, th, this is correct. They, they had it shown out for five years, but nothing in the first year. So they, they basically pushed everything back a year, so we got two fifty into the first year, from zero to two fifty.
So, so that's correct, Ms., Ms. Hanson?
Yes, that is correct. When we originally proposed it to the subcommittee and they saw it for the first time, the funding for this particular project started in year two, um, in order for us to really understand what the scope of this project was going to be, the re, the subcommittee recommended that they would really like to see that, um, move forward a little faster, and so we did put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in year one. Um, and then it, that two fifty carries through the whole ten years. First five, excuse me.
Okay. And now we're trying to squeeze some more. Okay. Well, at least the subcommittee's been consistent.
And if I may amplify, what Ms. Hanson said is the process literally of all funding, that it's not typically put in for one year, and that resolves it. It's an incremental process to accomplish something, as we look throughout the budget. It's an ongoing thing once it's in the budget.
I was, I was just curious to see that if, if this was such a big issue, could it have been solved on the subcommittee level for it came out? But what I'm hearing is that it was, because they was able to stretch out, um, they did make modifications based off the subcommittee's, um, recommendations. So the, so the city staff has made modifications and taken those recommendations in. And if I understand what Ms. Hanson's saying, to the max capacity of what they can do right now. I, I hope, that's the way I understand it. So I just want to make sure I'm clear. So I think I am.
But I, and you know, I turn to the two representatives from this, uh, group that served, that being Mr. Rekta and that being Mr. Staylor.
Uh, Ms. Chairman, in, in response to, um, that, that question, basically, uh, when I opened my comments, I, I made the, the comment that I'd asked for some preliminary information prior to that meeting of, of us, and, um, basically, we were given nothing. We sat down, we got the presentation for the first time. The different department heads had done a great job. They came to us and, uh, and presented that. But, uh, here again, you've got a hundred and some pages of information. Um, we did kind of the same thing that, uh, that our chairman asked for, what page are we talking about, because it's bouncing all over the page. There was no vote taken by the committee, to my knowledge. We basically got a review of it, uh, before it came, and we're given the opportunity to make some comments. Um, so, uh, the, I, I don't think it's inappropriate for us to, to look at this, obviously, as a body, what the committee, uh, the two of us, uh, we did look at it, we got an opportunity to, uh, to, to see it in advance. Uh, but that's not to say that this whole commission, uh, is not, uh, in place to review the entire thing and to make any changes and recommendations. My thought was that, uh, by, uh, we're not asking for it to be changed, we're just saying to the city council, with our approval of this, that it would be in the best interest of maybe the citizens of the city to look very hard at that funding and see if, if the funding can be changed. We're not saying change anything, find it, take it away from this pocket and put it in the other pocket. But I think we are saying, okay, take a look at it. Uh, I know that in, in past histories, uh, city council has made changes to, uh, the CIP, uh, after they did their review. So, uh, they obviously have the capacity to make the change, to go back to the city management and say, okay, we need to find this money somewhere else. Um, there's always some slush and some flush in a, in a budget of this side or a, a CIP of this side. So I think we're just saying, city council, take a look at that real hard, uh, because some of the citizens in this city are suffering because of the lack of access to the internet.
Well, we are. Well, we are. We have heard staff's report on the proposed capital improvement plan for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty thirty-one. We have a motion and a second to, uh, forward this to city council. Uh, and again, I'm going to turn to Mr. Rekta to restate what, uh, the recommendation attached to this motion is.
I believe, and I have to go back, you know, as they used to say in the sports world, uh, roll the tape, um, but I believe-
That's why I'm not going to try to recycle it.
But I, I believe what we said was we would, uh, pass it as presented with a recommendation that the two hundred, that the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year dedicated to expanding internet access be compressed as much as possible into year one.
That matches up to my memory of what you said.
Mine too, I think.
And mine three.
Well, again, again, we've had so much to say. When I call for the vote on the motion in just a minute, I want to make sure that commissioners understand what it is that is being voted on. That, that's the simple point here. All right. We have the motion and second, we're in discussion of the motion. Any more comments or questions from commissioners? Mr. Hanley, I'm going to ask you to, uh, roll call this vote.
All right. Commissioner Benton?
Yes.
Commissioner Crakemore?
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
No.
Commissioner Hicks?
Yes.
Commissioner Rekta?
Yes.
Commissioner Singleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Staylor?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, it's a seven-one-one to vote, recommendation to recommend to city council they adopt it, it with the recommendation from Commissioner Rekta.
Thank you. Thank you all for that. And, and, uh, uh, to Mr. Rekta and to Mr. Staylor, thank you for, for your service, uh, to the city, uh, this year, and we, only in recent years has it been that city council has invited us to participate in this process. That did not take place until some, uh, a few years ago. Uh, and we rotate this in the appointment of commissioners. I would think maybe each of us have at some point participated. And with a budget, uh, it's, it's, it's no more so with the city than even with us as individuals, uh, in our homes or, or businesses. in our homes or businesses, there's a finite amount of resources to work from on any given year. It's the same with the city. And it can be very challenging sometimes to determine what need gets what amount of support financially, and I think that's where we are with this. Another year, another time, it may be something else that the need is pressing. And I think it's publicly recognized that the circumstances of the public being restricted in meetings, schools not operating publicly, that this has become a point of focus at this time. But, but thank you for what you've done, and this qualifies us to move on to City Council as requested. Next on the agenda, new business. Mr. Hanley, I turn to you for a status report of the City Council meeting of December 16.
Mr. Chairman, I wish the commission, on December 16, City Council acted on two items sent forward from this body. The first was a rezoning request, RZN 2019-011, conditional, which is Godwin Park, located on Godwin Boulevard. This went forward with a recommendation for it to be changed from the mixed, the collection of districts, to which it currently is considered into a mixed-use development overlay district, and it was approved with the conditions set forth by this body. The second one was an expansion of a daycare facility adjacent to, continues to the rezoning request, but unrelated to it, to expand the unique Little Hands daycare facility located on Godwin Boulevard with the recommendations from this body, and went forward with a recommendation for approval and was so acted upon by City Council. There are no plats, preliminary plats that were approved during this body, and I will now yield to Mr. Singleton regarding a request from staff that was sent forward to Mr. Singleton regarding an amendment to the UDO.
Thank you, Mr. Haley. I've got an easy one for you. We had a much discussion back, I think it was in November, about the solar facilities, the upkeep and the growth, and the staff gave us a, an outline of ordinance at our December meeting that was in our package. I'd like to make a recommendation to initiate an ordinance tax amendment and to schedule a public hearing for February 16 in order to amend the section 31-724 Solar Energy Facilities of the Unified Development Orders in order to imply clarity and consistency within the UDO, and to update and refine the UDO due to a change in circumstances.
That's the motion.
That's the motion. You've heard the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
The motion.
From Commissioner, uh, Creekmore, second from Commissioner Creekmore. Discussion of the motion. Let's try this with a voice vote. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Thank you for that.
Thanks, sir.
All right, we are approaching adjournment, but before we do that, are there any comments from commissioners at this time, or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to thank the city. I know most everybody's left, but they did a fine job in putting together the CIP. It's quite a, if you have not served on that subcommittee, when you have all the department heads coming to you and going through the items, like I said, I would prefer that anyone serving on that have information in advance of the meeting, because once again, you're looking at a 100-page document, it's difficult to really make any live decisions when you're getting that much thrown at you at one time. But anyway, thank the city for doing a fine job with that. Understand that planning departments had some, come some COVID, and I hope everybody's doing well. I'm glad to see David back, and I just would like to say, everybody stay safe, this stuff is bad, get your shots when you can get them, and thank you, that's it.
You, are there any other comments from commissioners? Thank each of you for your participation this afternoon. We are now adjourned.